Please continue standing.
Let us pray. Father, Lord, we are so grateful and thankful for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, we thank you for this great council, Lord, that's before us tonight. Lord, as we feel and know that they have Riverbank's best interests in their heart and working together. Lord, we also want to recognize and thank you that we have this opportunity, city council meeting, every other Tuesday to be able to share concerns and feelings towards development and different things going on in the city. And we do appreciate the opportunity to voice our our concerns. And Lord, I know that together as we listen and hear one another and then make the right move moving forward, that Lord God, all of us are going to continue to do our best to make this community, the great community that it is to live in. I just thank you for the presentations tonight, Lord. I thank you that, Lord, at the end of the day, Lord, we'll walk away knowing that together we're stronger and we're better. And we do, we truly give you all the glory, all the honor and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. The first one is a proclamation National Library Week. And I'm going to go down there to read it because we do have our librarian. And if you'll join us, join. Okay, so this turned on. All right, the City of Riverbank Proclamation, National Library Week. Whereas literacy is key to achieving personal success in school, in business, and in life. Whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibility through technology, innovative programming, and through the power of innovation, information. And whereas libraries after twenty-four-seven, offer twenty-four-seven access to libraries, services through online resources such as eBooks, e-magazines, downloadable audible audiobooks, music, movies, online language instruction, and research databases. And whereas libraries partner with parents and caregivers to empower children to enter kindergarten with the knowledge and skills necessary for success in school and beyond. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, volunteers, and supporters in Stanislaus County are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby unanimously proclaim April twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Stanislaus County Library Week, and urges everyone to visit their local library and take advantage of the wonderful resources available provided through the voters approved one eighth cent sales tax dedicated to the support of the library, signed this day, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm going to have you say something, but we're going to take pictures first, right? Okay, well, you could do both. Okay, so I'll stand by.
Okay. Well, I just really appreciate the community support of the library, and I hope that we serve you as well as as we can. And I just want to say that this week, we had our very first class visit at the library, which was exciting. And we had our DIA on last Saturday, so we are up and going. So next, next week starts our storytime again. We were off for April. So next Tuesday is our first storytime in the session. So thank you very much.
And when do I read? When do I read? We're going to continue with item seven point two, Presentation Cannabis Tax Fund Grant by Deputies Maldonado and Bavaro. If you will, gentlemen.
Well, good evening, council. How are you? Had the pleasure of meeting most of you, not all, but I'm Deputy Maldonado. This is Deputy Bavaro. We are two of the three members of our traffic unit here within the City of Riverbank and one of our motor officers. And we're going to be discussing a little bit about the cannabis tax fund grant program. This is managed by Sergeant Luke Schwartz, but we're going to sit here and present to you today, do our best to answer any questions you may have. We'll keep the presentation brief so that we have time for those questions. Okay, so what is it? So basically, it's a result of the passing of Prop sixty-four, which legalized the adult use of marijuana. With that, voters mandated that California set aside funds generated from taxes of these sales so that the California Highway Patrol can award grants to local governments and qualified nonprofit organizations. And this program aims to reduce impaired driving crashes through increased public awareness or increase public awareness surrounding the danger of impaired driving, ultimately making our roadways safer. So how do we use it? We were lucky to be awarded this grant in July of two thousand and twenty-two. It's our second year with this grant. And with it, the funds pay for DUI checkpoints, saturation, and directed enforcement patrols, as well as the purchase of equipment that we use that would aid us in the use of these operations. So a great example, you've probably seen out on the streets of Riverbank is our speed trailers, our Blue Speeds and Sign Trailers. Great for gathering data, but during our checkpoints, we're using them as sign trailers to announce the checkpoint and things like that. Okay? This grant also requires that we provide education to local government bodies and businesses. Usually, we tailor it to the cannabis industry just to kind of fulfill that portion of the grant. And we talk about the dangers of impaired driving. So I pulled some stats from the California Office of Traffic Safety. Unfortunately, they don't have anything more recent than two thousand and eighteen. So the stats remain the same as last year's presentation. Forty-two percent of drivers were killed or who were killed in a crash that were tested, tested positive for legal and illegal drugs. And then that number has increased every year since then, so we're looking at obviously a higher number today. Over the course of ten to fifteen years, we're seeing more people on prescription medications, ranging anywhere from painkillers to muscle relaxers. I mean, you could see the list up there. And so pretty much what we hear a lot of in our encounter, whether it be on stops or other contacts through our line of work, is, you know, just, it may be prescribed to you, however, it's still your responsibility to know how set prescription medications or whatever it is that you're taking affects you. We always point out the do not drive or operate heavy machinery labels. And yeah. I'm going to pass this on to my partner now. Go ahead, partner.
All right. Good evening, council. Just over more stats from our recent checkpoints that we've had this year. Our most recent one was in March seventeenth, and I was here in Riverbank. We conducted the checkpoint on Clarabelle Road, just east of Squire Wells. We had a total of six hundred and seventy vehicles that passed through the checkpoint. And during that checkpoint, we're looking for impaired drivers, as well as if they're driving without a license. We conducted thirteen field sobriety tests. And field sobriety tests are determined if a driver is actually impaired or not. We had one DUI arrest, three other arrests, meaning they most likely had warrants. Fourteen six oh one CBC, which is driving on a motor vehicle with a suspended license. We've issued two citations and seven citations for not driving with a valid license. And we towed three vehicles. One of those vehicles was most likely from the DUI arrests and the others for the suspended license or without a license. And Patterson, on January twenty-first of this year, we had four hundred and six vehicles go through the checkpoint. We had conducted eight field sobriety tests, two DUI arrests, one driving on suspended license citation, and nineteen driving without a license. And vehicles towed during that night, we had seventeen. So it's an increase from Riverbank, obviously. Just some other information regarding ingesting marijuana and alcohol while driving. It is an infraction to consume alcohol or marijuana when you're driving. And that is an infraction. Obviously, we would conduct field sobriety tests on a subject that's been ingesting marijuana or alcohol. It just depends on their level of impairment or if they're impaired at all. Consuming alcohol or marijuana or smoking marijuana as a passenger in a vehicle is as well as an infraction. Studies show marijuana slows your reaction time and decision-making. You are twenty-five percent to thirty-five percent of higher risk of crashing during the first thirty minutes after smoking. And mixing alcohol and marijuana is dangerous and increases the risk. That is it for our presentation. If you have any questions, we'll take questions and I'll quick answer.
Does anyone from the council have any questions or comments?
I have a question. So just like you do the breath test, is there something for marijuana to test?
For marijuana, there's nothing for the breath. They do call it a DRE, Drug Recognition Expert, and we currently don't have any DRE certified deputies here, so we utilize CHP officers. They have a couple in the county that performs the tests. So if we pull somebody over for suspicion of being impaired with marijuana, we'll still go through our field sobriety tests, check their eyes, do more tests to see their impairment. And if we do arrest them, we usually take them to the CHP office and they'll conduct more thorough basically field sobriety tests. It's like an hour long. They'll check their heart rate, blood pressure, and just do more tests to see how much impaired they are. But for marijuana, there's no level of impairment for the breath that we could test to find out.
No, I was going to have a similar question. Obviously, the BAC, what the threshold there, how you guys tested that, but obviously you you answered the question there. So no questions here. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to thank you. You guys do a fantastic job. I hope you can concentrate on those that are speeding, doing donuts, drifting, all the other.
Yeah, we have a lot of that in Riverbank and try our best to track down, but there's just so many of them.
I was back in DC last week, and when it's a yellow light, people stop. Not here. It goes red and three seconds later.
Yeah.
Oh, we need to start looking closer at that. So a citizen can witness it and report it?
Yes, absolutely. But like, as far as, you know, a ticket being issued or anything like that, we would have to.
But if you had a camera, some of the most popular ones, would that work?
I was watching that camera live. Yes.
Darn it.
I know. I said the same thing.
Don't do that. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Do you have any? Anybody have any? All right, moving on. Public comment. This time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. And time cannot be yielded to another person. State law matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Please speak directly into the microphone, and anyone online, refer to the last page for participation in public comment.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jamie Agers. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County, but within the proposed Riverwalk specific plan project. I've spoken to you several times over the past almost two years now. And I'll repeat my most significant comments, which include, number one, not having been notified of the notice of preparation that came out for the proposed project on June first of two thousand and twenty-one. It's not a question of whether or not we were close enough to be impacted. We, our parcel is listed in the notice of preparation, along with fifty-some other property owners in our area, none of which were notified. Number two, Riverbank received a significant increase to their sphere of influence in two thousand and sixteen, fifteen hundred acres nearly. And that is an increase that is supposed to carry the city for at least a twenty-year planning horizon. So from two thousand and sixteen to the year two thousand and thirty-six, we are a long ways from that happening. Yet, five years later, in two thousand and twenty-one, a project proponent came forward requesting another fifteen hundred acres to be added to your sphere in the form of the Riverwalk specific plan. So our concern there is multifold, but in particular, that the area that's being proposed to pave over into up to thirty-three hundred homes and businesses is area that is classified by the State of California Department of Conservation in their farmland mapping program as prime ag land or lands of statewide significance. Those are the two highest categories in that program. So the concern is development should be directed towards soils of lesser quality. And I urge you to vote no on this project when it becomes comes before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Whitstone. I live at seventy-eight twenty-four McHenry Avenue. My property and house overlook the river bottom where the Riverwalk project is proposed. Again, my main objection, I guess, is that it's just so far out of town. You know, why would we want to skip a couple miles of farmland and then have a development out there in the middle of nowhere? And again, it's prime ag land, so please consider that when you when you look at this project. And, you know, let's let's build out from Riverbank, not jump out and then build back in. Thank you.
Next, please. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Not as of right now, Mayor.
Hello, my name is Karen Canrato. I live on Hoag Road. Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Vice Mayor Rachel Hernandez, Councilmember Luis Oribi, Leanne Jones Cruz, Darlene Barber Martinez, and staff. Thank you. I want to say first, thank you for your time. I know you've heard this many times before. I'm here to let you know how concerned we are with the proposed Riverwalk project being considered by the Riverbank City Council, or will be considered. We remain firmly opposed to this project with the destruction of prime agricultural land, the depletion of groundwater, loss of water recharge, depletion of aquifer, destruction of riparian wildlife and plant life, reduction and destruction of wildlife corridor, unmet infrastructure needs, significant increase in traffic, and decreased first responders response time potential, pollution concerns, the sprawl, the adequate land already on poor, with with access to poor soils. The list goes on. So please consider all the impacts this project would have on this city, our county, and the state. Please vote no on this project when it comes before you. Thank you again for listening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. Jacob Holder with Senator Marie Alvarado Gil's office. Just wanted to provide a brief legislative update. The senator has three bills currently that are going through the process up in the Capitol. SB two-two-six would make fentanyl among the list of drugs as illegal to possess a firearm with that is set for hearing in the Senate Public Safety on April twenty-fifth. District assistance with a call from participants, what would have been appreciated. SB two-six-eight, that's violent felonies specifically related to rape. It would make rape of unconscious person a violent felony that passed unanimously out of Senate Public Safety on April eighteenth. This was a huge victory for the senator. The amended version only applies a new violent felony to someone who causes their victim to be unconscious, i.e. drugging before the rape. Next step would be the center appropriations. And then SB three-seven-five, that'd be our COVID-nineteen compliance tax credit. It would basically provide fifty dollars per employee for large businesses and hundred dollars per employee for small businesses. And that is set for hearing in the Senate Labor tomorrow, April twenty-sixth. The bill is facing a tough committee vote. Local business support is appreciated. That concludes my report. If anyone has any questions.
Three-seventy-five again is, what's the title of it?
Oh, it's SB three-seven-five COVID-nineteen Compliance Tax Credit.
Okay. Code nineteen?
Yeah, so it's basically, it would provide tax credits, fifty dollars for large businesses, a hundred dollars for small businesses per employee. It's basically for businesses that were affected throughout the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
We do need to meet the senator.
Oh, I'll pass. Thank you.
And I'd like to meet her at her office. Any other comments? All right. What are we doing this Saturday?
This Saturday, April twenty-ninth, is Love Riverbank, and I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity that maybe hasn't registered yet to there's still time to register at loveriverbank.com. And we'll be meeting at the Community Center Park under the gazebo at eight AM. We'll have Starbucks coffee. You'll be provided with a T-shirt and also a ticket for a free lunch at the Founder's Carnival afterwards. We'll be going through our city between the hours of nine AM to twelve. And we'll be hitting all different kinds of projects. You'll be able to to sign up for those five projects online, depending on what you want to do. And just looking forward to everyone coming together. There's been a lot of interest. We, it was kind of slow at first, but we're getting close to around eighty people that have volunteered now. And just all ages and people coming together. I want to take a time to just thank the city for all their insight and direction and what we are moving forward with, and just really appreciate all of you and how you how you just made it easy for us as a community to be able to come together and help work in our city together. Thank you.
Pastor, I have a question for you. So we still have thinking notes at the library, right?
At the library, yeah. I, yeah, I just, I picked them up at Home Depot, Starbucks, at Crossroads, and then the churches that were involved as well.
I'll pick up the ones for Thursday, by Thursday at the library.
Thank you. Thank you. I totally just forgot about the library. Not that I forget about the library, but.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on. No online?
There is no one online, Mayor.
We're going to move to the consent calendar. Consistent of item nine-one, waived readings nine-two, approval of the City Council and local redevelopment Authority Board minutes of April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Nine-three, a resolution to approve and adopt the City of Riverbank recycle product procurement policy. Item nine-four, a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a consultant agreement for retainer on-call planning services with Interwest Consulting Group. Item nine-five, resolution authorizing a budget amendment of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars to the general fund, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, building maintenance budget for repair of the City Hall North restroom sewer system. Is there anyone wishing to pull any of these items? Anyone wishing to discuss these items? Is there anyone wishing to consider these items?
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion to approve and a second on the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Item eleven-one, a resolution of concurrence and support for the approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Annual Action Plan AAP.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Letitia Ibanez, who's our housing specialist, will be providing the report on this item. Just as a reminder to all of our residents, our housing department does offer first-time home buyer and housing rehabilitation grants, and so we hope that we encourage everyone to call our offices to be able to receive more information.
Good evening, city council members. Again, my name is Letitia Ibanez. I work for, I'm in the housing division. And I'm here to present the fiscal year twenty, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four CDBG Annual Action Plan. So the annual action plan requirements, it requires us to have an annual review of projects to be funded with the CDBG funds. An opportunity for the public to comment on the projects and projects. Project funds must be spent in areas with greater than fifty percent lower median income. This is the map of the area of the area income. And and the next slide will have the projects, but these are the the two, the two areas that we'll have. So for the prior year's project status, I'll be going over that. We had, I think, last year, we, I did the presentation on these projects. So for the first project was the Castleburg Park Trail. That location is in the corner of Kentucky and Eighth Street. And combined with the Castleburg Park ADA improvements. This project has been awarded to construction, and we're hoping that by Monday, we'll be starting on the on the project. And the cost estimate for the park trail is a hundred and ten, and the ADA improvements, the components, would be the twenty-five thousand. The next project is the water and sewer line installation. That would be in the alley between Riverside Drive and High Street. The address is thirty-seven, thirty-seven seventeen High Street and to Fourth Street. That's the Pioneer Park out and that area. That project is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The following project is the Pioneer Park ADA improvements. That's located in the corner of, I mean, on First Street through High Street. That part, that project would be carried on forward. So these projects has been on the list for fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we'll be moving forward for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And the total constructions for this would be four hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, our annual action plan for these projects would be the water line installation, the water and sewer line installation. Again, it's the location is the, is located in the alley between Riverside Drive and High Street from thirty, thirty seventeen High Street to Fourth Street. Cost estimation is a hundred and fifty. And the Pioneer Park ADA improvement located on First Street and High Street, that project is to be carried forward. That's an estimation of sixteen thousand, three hundred for the photo total year, total fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred. For the photo total year total fiscal year of twenty three, twenty four, a hundred and sixty six thousand three hundred. For the Pioneer Park ADA improvements, we're hoping to meet sometime soon. We're good. It was the plans had already been sat and established, but we're gonna be meeting out there again. There's gonna be some modifications to those ADAs. So hopefully, once we meet out there, we'll be able to get the project a little the plans a little bit settled. And for the complete fiscal year for twenty three, twenty four annual action plans for all the entities belonging to the consortium can be found at the Stanislaus County website, and the link is right there at the very bottom. So the recommendation for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four CDB annual action plan, number one is to allow for the public, allow for public comment. Number two, consider adopting the resolution of concurrence on the proposed project. And that's the end.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Go ahead.
I just I thought I had it straight in my head, and then I got confused. The it was three hundred and twenty five thousand for the alley project on High and Fourth. And then another hundred and fifty thousand that we're adding to it because of the cost increase. Am I correct on that? Or is it total?
The hundred and fifty thousand for the water and then the six. What was your?
So the the slide before it, the three hundred and fifty thousand for.
Oh, that's yes. That would be that's gonna be moving forward with the.
So that was the original cost of it. And then because of stuff and inflation and stuff going up, it's a hundred and fifty added to that? Or is that the total?
That would be the total action.
Right? Is that? What I'm asking?
Yes, I understand what you're asking. So what happens is each year we're allocating to the project. So the project's actually more than the three hundred and twenty five thousand. We when we just had the engineer do a reestimate on it, I think we're around seven hundred thousand. And so we're taking each year, we're allocating a section two of the funds to that project. And then we'll then we can start working on it. It will take some funds other than CDBG to get that project done.
Oh, it is the three twenty five from the previous years that we've.
Plus the hundred and fifty. Okay. All right. I did have it.
Someone we're carrying it forward. You're waiting until you can get the entire project done at one time.
Got it.
Us adding to cost.
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you. I was just a little confused.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, 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 that was me. I thought I had it straight. Thank you, though.
Oh, you're not done yet. Is there any public comment or questions? Anyone online?
Mayor, there is no one wishing to speak.
All right. Well, we're gonna thank you very much, and we allowed the public time to comment. None was provided. So we're gonna move forward to.
Mayor, you might want to ask a quick question just on the trail.
That's what I asked you to ask.
I was I was trying to sneak in there, sir. You're you're quick. Just just a follow up clarification point.
Sure. No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So May eighth was the official kind of groundbreaking for the trail, right, at Castleburg Park? And do we know a timeline about that? Because I know I'm gonna I'm gonna see a lot of residents asking.
Cenced for Castleburg Park?
Castleburg Park Trail, you said May eighth. You said Mondays.
This Monday.
Coming up Monday. And so do we know a timeline as far as completed? Eight weeks. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, public comment? I have to do that again. No public comment. I bring it back for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the item eleven point one.
And I'll second it.
We have motion to approve item eleven one and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Odebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez? Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Item eleven two, resolution authorizing a budget amendment of fifty thousand dollars to the American Rescue Plan Act spending plan for funding allocated to Jacob Myers Park Trail Expansion Project.
Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide the report.
Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, we've been trying for years and years to get the lease from the Army Corps for the property west of Jacob Myers Park, and we are closer than we've ever been before. What we did in September is we came to council or council reviewed a list of projects for the American Rescue Plan funding, and the building of the trail was on the list of those funds for fifty one thousand five hundred to build that trail. The process that we've been going through is the Army Corps requested that we submit a lease proposal and a management plan, which I did about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago. It things moved slowly. They finally approved it with the stipulation that we complete the environmental. So that was our next step. So we have the funding for the for the project. When we the last six months, what we've been doing is trying to define the scope of the environmental that they would want us to complete. So that was challenging. We finally narrowed it down, and we went out to bid, and we were alarmed at the cost of the environmental. So we narrowed, we've been working on narrowing that down to just the trail area because it's a very low impact trail. I'll be bringing a map and all the information as we progress a little bit. But it's very extremely low impact. So we're hoping to downsize that. But since we are getting so close, I wanted to request an amendment to that funding to include the environmental. Even though I know it's gonna be less than what requesting is not to exceed fifty thousand, I want to not have to keep coming back so I could keep that momentum going. We're in the process of looking at all the environmental we've already done over the years. Because as we applied for grants for the current trail and all the other things we put out there, we always included the Army Corps property because we were looking forward ahead that we knew we wanted to do that. So some of the things like the archaeological dig, we had nineteen trenches dug out there over the years. We had cultural studies done. A lot of the work may still be accepted. It's eighteen years old. We did it back in two thousand four, two thousand and eight. But some of it is still okay. So I'm hoping over the next week or so, when we get our final bids in and we downsize that scope, it's gonna be quite a bit less. So when I come to you, probably the end of summer with this lease agreement from the Army Corps all ready to go and be reviewed and and signed, we'll have I'll be able to come and say that that was a lot less that we needed for that environmental. But we're just at that crossing point where we're almost there. So that's where we're coming back tonight, just saying. Can we authorize a budget amendment to get us through this process? We'll get it the least expensive as we can, but to move forward without any delay. So that's where we're at. If you have any questions, I will definitely be coming back with a map of the whole route of the trail, all the pictures, all the details of the lease. We're just not quite there yet.
Are there are there any questions?
Have we had conversations with the Corps of Army engineers so they know that we want to do our expansion?
Yes, we've walked a trail where we've been meeting for eighteen years, but especially over the last two years. What's happening right now is we have their trust. The Army Corps likes what we've done at Jacob Myers. They didn't know for sure if we can manage the acreage that we have now, but with that management plan, it's pretty much self sufficient out there. They like, they go out there for lunch. They like how it looks and what we've been doing. So we have their confidence right now, and the the timing is better than it's ever been to push this through.
I just wanted to say, nice job, Sue. I know that's been a long one coming. So I know it's kind of fun to have seen something, you know, that was a dream so long ago to kind of come true. So I love that. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment or ask questions on this item? Okay, Sue, very good job. They bring it back for consideration.
Make a motion. We approve item eleven point two.
And I'll second it.
We have motion to approve our eleven two and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Odebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Sue. And if it took you eighteen years for a park, no wonder it's taken us so long for the LRA. All right, comments, staff?
So of course, I want to make sure that everybody is invited to our health fair, which is this Saturday from eight to one PM at the Riverbank Community Center. A lot of great services that we'll be offering that day. It is free to the public, so please put the word out. In addition, we have our annual Founder's Day Carnival, which will start at twelve o'clock. Also at the Community Center Park, that's also free to the public, all the games and events. Music that we'll have are all free. We'll have vendors out there for food, for different, you know, items. And so we invite everybody to to join us that day. And then I'm really happy to announce through an approved memorandum of understanding between the city and Stanislaus County workforce development that in May, we'll be starting free technology classes for our senior residents. And so seniors will be taught how to use an iPad and be able to access email, internet messages, social media. At the completion of their course, they'll be able to keep the iPad, and they'll also get a year of internet access paid for free. So we'll be putting out information as well as workforce development on how to register for those. The classes are currently scheduled to be held on Tuesdays from one to two PM, beginning five nine. And so what we hope to be able to do is for those residents who might need access to transportation is to be able to connect them with Start and be able to facilitate that.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Okay. Councilmember Jones Cruz?
I have a couple of things tonight, actually. First off, I have met with a couple of business owners who are very excited about the FASAD program. So I just I got some positive stuff back from some friends that were very, very excited about that. I also got a chance to go to the California League of Cities Summit with two of my other colleagues up here. We got to meet with several of our legislators at the Capitol, which was very exciting. We actually wasn't at the Capitol because Capitol's under reconstruction, but it's right down the street. And got a chance to attend several workshops, which were very informative. It was a very good conference, good use of time. I also want to remind everyone that I'm happy to announce that the Downtown Business Coalition has gone in partnership with the city and will be putting on the downtown market, and that is starts May ninth. And we'll run through June thirteenth, right down here, between the blocks on Santa Fe between third and fourth every Tuesday night from five to eight. So very much like the last two summers. So encourage you guys to do that on Tuesdays, starting May ninth to June thirteenth. And I think that's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Odebe?
Thank you, Mayor. So any resident that's interested and hasn't had the opportunity to tour our transitional housing for our homeless, we're setting up a little tour with my me, myself and some staff members. We're gonna be meeting at the Sierra Home on Monday, May first at nine AM. So if you're interested, we'll get a quick little update on some of the improvements that are already happening there and what's to come. The next sister city committee will be, we're gonna be holding a special meeting on May third, six o'clock here in the chambers. We've reached out to the Hispanic Chamber to kind of give us some insight on some fundraising that we're trying to do for the committee. And finally, just a single mile, be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez? I was gonna say Darlene. Councilmember Darlene?
Okay, so as you just heard that I attended also the California League of Cities. And some of the topics of interest to me were the universal inclusionary housing, fighting crime with civil litigation, surplus land, and and housing land that we can use for improvement of our housing plans. And you also heard that about our thanking our heroes for in our first responders and also I'm adding to that public service. And then also, we do have thank you cards that I will be picking up from the library probably on Thursday. So you do have a chance to get your library, go to the library and fill out some of the thank you cards. And we have them for first responders, for teachers, for. Okay, and like I said, I added public service to that also. And if you so are so inclined to bake cookies, we have cookie trays coming also. So you can bring your cookie trays to my office on Thursday morning around ten o'clock. You can get in touch with me. And also, I'd like for people to put them in a real nice tray, put a bow, and also include a thank you note. And so I'll be giving those out on Thursday, Friday, and also on Saturday. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And one final echo on the Cal Cities Conference. I mean, it was it never gets old to be like, we're not Riverside, we're Riverbank, the city of action, and to talk about all the exciting stuff we got going on here. I mean, we were able to connect with other council members from other cities, with assembly members and yeah, to be able to to advocate for what the work we're doing out here. Soon after that, I flew to DC to go with our Stanislaus Council of Government. So I was there with other county supervisors, with council members, and meeting with, I mean, our senators, our congresspeople, Department of Transportation. And personally, to be able to talk about a medis and the important work that's going on there and the connection with the North County Corridor and and just the importance of having jobs here in the city and in the county rather than people having to commute. So it's very worthwhile to 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 connect with everybody and build those relationships. And otherwise, I'll see y'all Saturday for Love River Bank.
All right, Love River Bank. All right, just a reminder, on Thursday at eleven thirty, I believe, I met us lunch at the LRA. Please, if you have time, I know you'll be collecting cookies, but you can sample some other stuff out there. But please, come on out, meet the businesses out there and start talking about the future for the City of Riverbank in the at the LRA. We had some great successes in in DC. Our city manager did a great job at the Department, no, US EPA. And we are very pleased to announce a lot of our our programs can be fully eighty percent funded. So we're we're moving forward. And I wanna, we're not done yet. She still has some work to do. And then then we have then we have to go to standard and core. And then then we can move forward. But successes there, we didn't make much headway with the at the Pentagon. But I now know how scared they are or reticent they are about pulling the the handle on on some type of mitigation. So I'm gonna go bypass everyone, go to the governor, governor's office, and directly say, get your pro problematic individuals under control. And I'm not bashful, so I will be doing that. I want to remind people, I know it's a month away, Memorial Day is coming on up, and I want to thank the sheriffs in advance for providing us not only honor guard, but also a gun salute. So that should be impressive. And if we can just finalize it, we do have one congressman coming and hoping that we could have some of our other local elected, state elected, whether it is Senator Gill or Eggman coming and and being at our ceremony. With that, there is no other business, except our next regular city council meeting will be on May ninth, twenty twenty three, at six PM. This meeting is now adjourned.